Good evening, I'd like to call the May Work Session to order please. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to our work session, Mrs. Fury, I believe we have special recognition tonight.
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have several elementary, middle, and high school students who recognize for their recent outstanding accomplishments. Tonight, I'd like to start with our students who performed incredibly well at the Georgia Regional Braille Challenge. The Braille Challenge is the only academic competition of its kind in North America for students who are visually impaired or blind. The Braille Institute developed the Braille Challenge to motivate students to practice and hone their Braille literacy skills, which are essential to academic and employment success. Any blind or visually impaired student in grades 1 through 12 who can read and write Braille is eligible to participate in the Braille Challenge. Contestants are divided into five categories and tested on fundamental Braille skills, such as reading comprehension, spelling, speed and accuracy, proofreading, charts and graphs. Students, when I call your names, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from our School Board Chair, Mrs. Shaquilla Henderson Baker. Lucas Montalvo. Lucas is a 4th grade student at South Salem Elementary School, and he won first-place honors in the freshman category at the Braille Challenge. In fact, Lucas has won an award at the Braille Challenge every year that he has participated. Congratulations, Lucas. Javon Harris. Javon is a 7th grade student at Liberty Middle School, and he earned the second-place award in the sophomore category. He also won an award at the Braille Challenge last year. Congratulations, Javon. Chad McDaniel. Chad is a 6th grade student at Indian Creek Middle School, and he won the third-place award in the apprentice category at the Braille Challenge. Congratulations, Chad. So very proud. Our next two students on the recognition list recently earned accolades and awards for their writing skills. They each won first place in the Regional Young Georgia Authors Contest. Students participating in the Young Georgia Authors Contest could submit entries in the form of short stories, poetry, essays, journals, personal narratives, reports, or other original student writing. Submissions were judged on four domains as they are reflected in the Georgia Standards of Excellence: ideas, organization, cohesiveness, and language. Students, when I call your names, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Henderson Baker. Justice Ferguson. Justice is a junior at Newton High School, and he won first place at the 2019 Griffin Risa Regional Young Georgia Authors Contest for his entry, "Dreamer of Storms." Congratulations, Justice. Ariana Gross. Ariana is a freshman at the Academy of Liberal Arts at Newton High School, and she won top honors at the Regional Young Georgia Authors Contest for her submission, "The Seeds." Ariana's work was then entered into the state competition. We are extremely proud to announce that she is the state champion in the freshman category of the Young Georgia Authors Contest. Congratulations, Ariana. So everybody heard that, she is the state champion. Next, I'd like to recognize several very musically talented students in attendance this evening. And we'll start with our students who were selected to perform in the 2019 All-State Chorus. Students selected to perform in the All-State Chorus must successfully compete in two rounds of auditions. During the audition process, students are required to perform a solo, sight read, and sing from memory their major, minor, and chromatic scales. If students pass the first audition, they must learn a pre-selected list of songs and sing selected passages for the judge in the second audition. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Gracie Bates. Gracie is an 8th grade student at Newton County Theme School, and she was selected to perform in the 2019 Middle School All-State Chorus. Congratulations, Gracie. David Castillo. David is a 10th grade student at Eastside High School, and he was selected to perform in the 2019 High School All-State Chorus. Congratulations, David. We had one other student selected for the All-State Chorus, but unfortunately, he was unable to attend this evening. Al Covey High School senior Jaden Simmons was selected to perform in the 2019 All-State Chorus. Let's congratulate him in his absence. In addition to our All-State Chorus members, we had two students selected for the 2019 All-State Band. Students selected for All-State Band were required to pass two rounds of auditions, where they had to play major scales, chromatic scales, and entire attuned and sight-reading examples. Students earning a place in this ensemble are among the most accomplished instrumentalists in the district. When I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Henderson Baker. Joseph Bickel. Joseph is a junior at Eastside High School, and he was selected to perform on the euphonium in the 2019 All-State Band. Congratulations, Joseph. We had one more student selected for the 2019 All-State Band, but he was unable to attend this evening due to a prior commitment. Duncan Jordan, a junior at Eastside High School, was selected to play the clarinet in the 2019 All-State Band. Let's congratulate Duncan in his absence. Finally, tonight, we have numerous middle school students who performed extremely well in the 2019 Regional Social Studies Fair. In fact, the Newton County School System had so many winners in the fair that we have had to split the recognition program into two board meetings. Tonight, we will recognize those students who won first or second-place awards. Students, when I, please come forward when I call your names. Kia Hanksen, Kendall Lambert, and Akira Morgan. Kia, Kendall, and Akira are 7th grade students at Clements Middle School, and they won first place at the Regional Social Studies Fair with their project, "How Social Media Affects Teenage Girls." Congratulations to each of you. Cameron Hinton. I'm sorry, not Cameron, Carmen. Carmen Hinton. Carmen, there she is. Carmen is a 7th grade student at Indian Creek Middle School, and she won first-place honors at the Regional Social Studies Fair with her project, "Adoption." Congratulations, Carmen. Rihanna Robinson and Michaela Williams? Is it Michaela? Okay, Rihanna Robinson and Michaela Williams. Rihanna and Michaela are 6th grade students at Clements Middle School, and they won second-place honors at the Regional Social Studies Fair with their project, "Georgia's Entertainment Industry: The Economics Behind the Hollywood of the South." Congratulations to Rihanna and Michaela. Jaden Williams? Is it Lenaya? Lenaya Turnbull and Juan Baras? Jaden, Lenaya, and Juan are 7th grade students at Liberty Middle School, and they won second-place honors at the Regional Social Studies Fair with their project, "Palestinians vs. Jews: Who Do You Feel Should Have the Right to Israel?" Congratulations to each of you on a job well done. Kayla Parsons, Keely Pontiff, and Haley Quinn. Kayla, Keely, and Haley are 7th grade students at Liberty Middle School, and they won the second-place award at the Regional Social Studies Fair with their project, "Genocide in Rwanda." Congratulations to each of you on a job well done. We had one additional student win a first-place award at the Regional Social Studies Fair, but unfortunately, he was unable to attend. Sam Lent, a freshman at Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute, earned first-place honors with his project, "How Will the Future Covington Town Center and Three-Ring Studios Affect the Economy in Covington?" Sam's project was also named best in region. Let's congratulate Sam in his absence. I would like to take a moment to thank all of our school administrators who are here this evening to support the students that we just honored and recognized this evening. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here and to create the conditions at your schools that allows our students to be so successful. And to our students, I cannot express, or there are not enough words to express how proud I am of each of you. As you have heard, there have been significant accomplishments from reading Braille to singing and playing in the band and to becoming a state champion with writing. And so, you represent our school system so very well, and I'm very, very proud of you. So keep going and keep pushing, because there's lots of years ahead of you to continue your success. So congratulations to you, and we're so proud to be able to recognize you tonight. Mrs. Henderson Baker, this concludes our recognition for the evening.
Okay, before we conclude all the way, I just want to make sure we didn't omit any students that walked in late. Okay, perfect. All right, thank you guys so much. You guys, that was an awesome job, some very impressive topics. And I would like to thank the family members. What do the family members of these students all say? Family, friends, cheerleaders, neighbors, whoever you are, to them. You guys deserve a round of applause. Thank you for the work that you do with the students when we do not have them with us. So we greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your support so much. And students, turn around and look at all these people that came out to support you. Give them a smile, now they got you here. Don't forget where your support system comes from. Your support system that will always push you in the right direction, because you are succeeding now, you are destined to succeed in the future. So thank you so much again. At this time, if you would like to leave, you may. We would love for you to stay, though. However, if you have somewhere to go, we surely do understand. So I ask that you depart quietly now, so we can carry on the business of the school system. Okay, at this time, we'll continue with our meeting. Public participation, Mrs. Guthrie, did we have any public participation? Okay, no public participation, very good. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sir, move.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Very good. Approval of the minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sir, may.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor? Very good, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
In the financial report, the Newton County School System's East Plast 4 Distribution for March was $1,169,334, which is an increase of $69,863 from last month's collection. The average for the first 50 months of East Plast 4 collections is $972,816. Item 2, the Title Ed Valorem Collection for March was $108,488. And finally, number 3 expenditures are within budget at 78.57% expended and 83.33% of the year complete. And then I would like to address one of the issues that came up during our budget meeting last Tuesday, in our marathon of board meetings this month. We did ask about, I did meet with Ms. Robinson about bus maintenance and repairs, and she's indicated that those expenses are indicated in the correct line item. As additional information regarding that item, we examined the approximate $1 million expended thus far in the fiscal year. Of that amount, 87% of those funds were for parts and 13% was for labor. We use outside labor in general for three things: engine replacement and installation, transmission repair and replacement, and wheelchair lift maintenance. All of these areas of repair require specialized training, equipment, and parts, which are commonly not stocked in transportation departments. Outsourcing the labor in these specialized areas allows our fleet technicians to focus on a few things, which are very important, such as engine repair, including wiring. I'm going to go through all of these, so that you have a sense of the work that they're doing. Including wiring, fuel injectors, head gaskets, water pumps, radiators, oil pumps, starters, alternators, fuel pumps, oil pumps, water steering boxes, catalytic converters, EGR coolers. These are all significant repairs and time-consuming. Number 2, engine maintenance, including changing of items such as injectors, oil, transmission fluid, and oil filters. Number 3, tire rotation and replacement. Number 4, air conditioning repair and maintenance. Most transportation shops do not do that, that's typically an outsourced thing. Number 5, repair and replacement of seat covers. And so, we do far more in-house work than most school districts that I have familiarity with. And I think this model allows us to best leverage the resources that we have available to us and provide the services that we provide in a cost-efficient and effective manner. So that is the response to that question that was asked. And that concludes the financial report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Barr, so much. Do we have any questions for Dr. Barr?
Yes, I do. Now, Dr. Barr, the purpose of my question concerned about the item line item was to separate contract labor and parts as an ongoing process. It would afford us, I mean, an opportunity to further or better analyze the costs that are incurred.
And I have those dollar amounts for you.
I didn't hear that, that will be changed in the accounting process and give it another number.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned at the beginning, Ms. Robinson, it said it was budgeted appropriately, but we can revisit that conversation and see if that change can be made.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr.
Yes, ma'am.
Strategic Plan Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a few items to highlight from the superintendent's report. Under Student Achievement and Success, on May 1st, 2019, Ms. Rosemary Fundus Youth was recognized at the Georgia Department of Education Superintendent's Recognition Ceremony as an exemplary English learner. Rosemary is a student in our Academy of Liberal Arts Program at Newton High School, and she is a former English learner. Rosemary entered the country in 2nd grade from Cameroon, I'm sorry, and became proficient in just three years. She has taken several AP and advanced classes and participates in several extracurricular activities. Rosemary plans to attend Xavier University on the Posse Scholarship, our school system's sole winner of that prestigious award. There she will major in pre-medicine and business. In the area of high-quality workforce, secondary instructional coaches participated in professional learning on reflective practices and relationship building in April. Coaches will use these strategies to develop a plan for supporting teachers and students in the classroom for the 2019-20 school year. Additionally, the instructional coaches reviewed instructional tools that focus on how learners inquire, respond, react, enjoy, create, and collaborate in learning settings in order to assist teachers with improving classroom instruction. In the area of culture, climate, and communication, Newton County Special Olympics hosted the area track and field meet, complete with a parade and opening ceremonies. Elementary, middle, and high school students and select adults in our community competed in six areas. More than 300 volunteers from the community assisted in this wonderful event. Newton High School's drum line and ROTC led the parade with Officer Matt Cooper riding in his car for the first time. Donna Hooper was the grand marshal. We thank the many financial sponsors, including Covington Ford, United Way, Knights of Columbus, Covington Police Who Care, and volunteers from Covington Fire Department, Newton County Fire Department, Georgia Probation, BD Bard, HB Fuller, and Piedmont Academy. Lunch was provided by Firehouse Subs for the management team during the parade. Everyone is thankful for all the support received from the school system and the community to make 2018-19 another successful year. And finally, under organizational and operational effectiveness, the Newton County School System earned a No Place For Hate designation from the Anti-Defamation League. To do so, all schools had to complete a year-long initiative that included a needs assessment, signing the resolutions of respect, and designing and implementing multiple anti-bias and/or bullying initiatives. The program is designed to help all stakeholders take the lead in maintaining and improving the school climate. Newton County School System is currently one of only two districts in the state to hold this designation. And that concludes the superintendent's report for that portion.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Good choice on your highlights, very good choice. That last one, really great. We're one of what now?
One of only two in the state to have that designation.
And also, Ms. Rosemary, for those that don't know, that scholarship is really, really hard to get, the Posse Scholarship. It's a very rigorous application process, interview process. You have at least three interviews, I believe, that you have to go through a panel. And the fact that she became proficient in English in 2nd grade in three, well, in three years, in 5th grade, and entering 2nd grade, that's impressive that she got that scholarship. Really, really good.
And the state recognized her for being an exemplary English learner, so that, yeah.
Excellent, okay, thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Roundtree? Okay, thank you. Enrollment Report.
As of May 7th, 2019, there are 19,680 students enrolled in the school system. In May 2018, a year ago, we had 19,702 students. So that is 22 more students than we currently have enrolled. And that is the enrollment report.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree on the enrollment report? Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Okay, we have a presentation.
Yes, ma'am. In item D, we have a presentation. Mr. Ray Moore with Cunningham, Forehand Matthews, and Moore Architects is here this evening to present plans for Eastside High School. We're proud of the plans that were developed through extensive collaboration with school and district stakeholders. So he's here to give you an overview of those plans this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate you having me here tonight. We'll try to go through this as quickly as possible, but as thoroughly as possible. This is typical of the high schools that hold 2,500, and this one will eventually. It takes a pretty good-sized building, and it's long. On the right-hand side will be basically the classroom wing. The core center will have all the core facilities. And the left-hand side is a gymnasium. There are not really two floors there. Parts of it have two floors, but primarily, it's a large gym that is two floors and an auxiliary gym. The wind has just let some daylight into the spaces. The main entrance here is kind of plain right now from this early elevation, but we're currently working on developing that so it's a more dramatic entrance, so that you can see it. It'll be unique, so that it will not look like the other schools. They'll have their own identity. Also, the brickwork is being developed at this point with bands and vertical areas of accent brick, so that it shows some differential in surface up and down through there. The high portion in the back, that is the commons area, so it'll be a big high area for the large seating area for cafeteria or meetings. And the rest of it will be pretty much a flat roof with drainage. This is our site plan. 278 is just off the screen, right up here. This is 142, as it comes down to the new traffic circle over here. Our entrance, primary entrance, is going to be off of 142, and it will come in as a boulevard, buses, and vehicles. The buses travel all the way down and line up on the end of the classroom wings, so that students are dropped straight into the classroom area. The area down here is intended to be a bus parking lot. Student parking will be over here. Their access, so that they don't conflict with buses, will be over here and around. And their entrance into the building will be through a plaza area here. This is mostly along here, visitor and special parking. Teacher and visitor parking out here, and the main entrance is right here. This is a plaza that comes all the way down, so that when you have gymnasium events, the rest of the entire building can be closed off, and the entry for the gymnasium will be on this end. Athletic fields are all concentrated, excuse me, whoop, got out of control there. The athletic fields are all concentrated around the lower level of the gym, so that you have tennis courts over here, baseball field, softball field. you have tennis courts over here, baseball field, softball field, with a common ticketing area in the center. Then you have the practice and soccer field, and the football field with track. There's an area here, a bank that's developed for a future concession, press box, stadium, home stadium. There's enough room in this area for a visitors' bleacher in the future. Areas for detention ring, these areas. Because of the nature of this site, we have drainage in almost every direction, so we've got to have, keep our water going where it always went, and as a result, we've developed a fourth basin over here. Looking at the building main level plan, this is your classroom wing, this is your bus drop. Your media center is central to the classroom areas. CTAE is in this area. Special Ed is in this area, both levels, so we, we split it up so there's two on each level. Admin, counseling, marketing, the art area, the commons area for cafeteria, the food service area, theater area, and the fine arts area. The, the theater area and commons area are directly off of the main entrance, so people coming for any kind of event goes directly to that area and don't have to go anyplace else. We can lock off everything so people can't wander through the building. This is the lower level, the main gym, I'm sorry, this is the main level of the, no, back up, this is the lower level of the gym, main gym, auxiliary gym, wrestling, weight, PE area, team lockers for the exterior sports, and team lockers for the interior, training room, and meeting room. The concession and some toilet areas are out here with access to the main level in this area also. The third level is the, is strictly classrooms. There is a future pod here and a future pod here. The, the purpose of our current design is to construct it for 1,650 students. Each of these pods adds 425 to get you to a total of 2,500. In this area, we have science and, and that pretty much wraps up. Here are the, can't keep my thumb off of all the buttons at once. Blowing these areas up a little bit so that you can see them, we'll take the media area and the business first. The media, media has an exit directly outside, but it's central to the two wings and stairwells that serve those wings. It's a typical media center with all the attributes of a normal learning commentary. This is the business wing, which houses three major spaces with their separate storage and teacher facilities. The next area is the CTAE area. That houses the agricultural lab, a tech lab, robotics lab, food and nutrition area, and a second classroom area for the agricultural students. The greenhouse is off the back, right here in the back. The next area is the fine arts area. For some reason, this included the kitchen, but we'll look at it later. First, we're going to look at the fine arts, which consists of the band, band storage, ensemble, practice rooms, and these are all shared with the coral area, and the coral area's storage, rope storage and such. Across the hall, we have the drama area, drama classroom, some changing rooms for male and female, a prop service area with access to the exterior, and the stage area. The theater and auditorium is down in this area. The next area is the theater and commons area. The theater seats 736 and has a separate sound and light booths. The commons area will seat the one-third of the 2,500 population when you grow to that extent. Entry to the theater is, there's ticketing area here. This is your main entrance. There's entry on this side and on this side. The main level of the gym is this area here. It has, typical of the other high schools, a track around the top, seats approximately 2,500 people. We'll have a center hanging scoreboard and retractable breechers. This is the auxiliary or practice gym, which is primarily used by the PE. These spaces on either side are mechanical spaces that serve all this large area here. The ROTC is in this area up here and has changing rooms for when they have to change uniforms for special events. This is the PE classroom area. This is the lower level, revisit. Again, the team lockers for the exterior, team lockers for the interior, the actual gym floor, the wrestling area, the weight area, and the auxiliary gym. All of these areas can exit to the outside as well as utilize stairs to go to the upper level, but they can't get back through to the rest of the building. Just a blow-up of the special ed, and they're all, all four are the same, just a mirror image. Each one has a little kitchenette, a large toilet area, and a classroom-sized space. The one on this side is just a mirror image of that one, and they stack to the second The next area is the admin area, the entry area, the counseling area, the marketing area, and the art area. The entry is a secure entry, vestibule. You have to go into the, you have to come in first, then you have to be allowed to come in to the reception area, and once you're vetted, you can go into the building. This side is the counseling and career area. They have a marketing area here and a store, school store here that faces the commons area. These two art rooms have access to the exterior, and there'll be a patio area here. Back to the kitchen area up here, which is serviced off of the service road in the back. Here's the greenhouse back here that we saw, or saw the hag lab area. The food service area, the entry is down the spine with freezer, cooler, dry storage, and the office area. This is a utility washing area, laundry area, custodial area for the kitchen only, and the lockers and toilets over here. This is the food preparation area with primary hood in the center, cooking on one side, baking on the other, and then walk-up service area for student serving. The, the entrance to this area, this is a counter all the way across, and there will be roll-up curtains here so that it can be closed off whenever it's not in use, prevent people from going back into the kitchen. Yes, ma'am?
Will you go back to the, I guess, the main area that has the theater, the commons area, the cafeteria?
The blow-up or the overall?
The overall.
The overall.
Yeah, this is fine.
Yeah, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Where will the students who drive vehicles to school come in?
Okay. They come in right here.
Okay.
Which, which is a plaza area, and it'll, it'll have a secure vestibule, too.
Okay. Then, the next question is, and maybe I'm probably going to laugh at me because it's probably sitting right here in my face, but I know one of the complaints at Eastside is that the lunches are always very, very crowded, and there's no room. And I don't know if you're familiar with the current Eastside, but there's doors that shut or gate or something that shuts. You said that this orange area, that's the commons area?
Well, it's the cafeteria. It's the ser, it's where they eat.
Okay, so the, I guess, tan section, that long hallway, will actually be the commons area, so it won't be like a big open area, so to speak?
Well, there, there's, there's no fences, gates, grills, walls, or anything. This is all open, all of this, well, there's.
There's no walls to the cafeteria, you're saying?
That's what I'm asking, because that's the way it looks, and so that there's no walls to block the cafeteria tables off, so to speak?
Uh, no, ma'am, they're just essentially aligned. You might not even have that many tables in there initially.
Right, so the commons area will be where they eat, will be the commons area.
That, that's right, right here.
So there won't be a designated, I, I just from a, I'm not accustomed to that. And I know currently, they try to keep those kids who are at lunch separate from that area, and they don't want to take the food out of the commons area and things of that nature, so.
And just some of the feedback that we got, I'm sorry, Ray, just some of the feedback that we got on that from school administrators were that's less area to monitor. Everything's out there for them to monitor, there's not, so there's not a separate commons area like at Newton High or.
They got it on the cafeteria. Okay, that's, I just don't know how it works, so that's why I was curious how that would happen.
So it's like you're eating at the mall?
Pretty much. Corn, food corn. Yes.
Except for the outside patio.
Right, this area sometimes gets finished off with some tables and covers, covered areas. A lot of students like to eat outdoors and.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the second slide.
Last slide, there. This one?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So the athletic fields are here, so help me to identify. I know there's parking here and there's parking here.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the range with the athletic fields being here? Is there parking, what is this right here?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. There is a small amount of parking right here to give coaches access primarily. People that come to events here can park there, too. In the, we've left space here so that in the future, you could put a field house there for the outdoor activities.
So my concern is parking at the fields located at the school soccer track, those things, the JV games, is always an issue. And there's parking is either an issue with the fact there's 15 to 20 spaces, and I'll use Newton for example, but you have soccer and the track and possibly softball going on at the same time, so they're parking on the main road, and it's hard to get through for traffic to flow. And then I can use Al Covey as an example as well, disability-wise and stuff like that. So it's either an issue with not enough spaces or for those people that are disabled having to park so far. And I really could use the current Eastside in terms of baseball field, so really, all of our schools. So that's, so that's my concern, so.
This parking right here is not very far away, really. This is just a short distance down this drive to these areas. When, when you develop this, if you develop this, all of this parking is fairly close also. I can't remember off the top of my head how many parking spaces are in here, but I want to say there's probably 40 or 50 spaces there.
So those could be designated not just for coaches, but.
Oh, no, no. During the daytime, the coaches would use them because it's convenient to where they're teaching.
But we could designate those for disabled.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll have, we'll have disabled spaces here, here, and down here. They have to be distributed around the site.
Yeah, it's still a concern, just the, because you can have two games going on at one time. And so, really, that takes, I, I mean, to be honest with you, it's an issue, and it's been an issue for a while, and it takes up all the, the spots. I see a high school principal shaking her head. It is, it's, it's an issue. It is.
It is, I'm sure.
Is the parking on the left, so that's the student parking?
Yes, ma'am.
Down at the very, sort of at the bottom of that, what is that?
That's the tennis courts.
That's the tennis courts.
Yes, ma'am. There, there's a drop in grade from here to here, and that's what these lines represent.
I just wondered if you could switch, somehow switch that, that it made the parking come down closer to the.
We could do that.
Majority of the fields.
We, we could do that. We could, we could put the tennis courts here and take out those first couple of bays and move those couple of bays down here, if, if that helps to.
Yeah, I mean, that would just make it a little closer to the, to the majority of the.
They'd give us 10 more spots.
I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing that.
10, 10 more.
And a little bit, yeah.
Madam Chair, the battle that we fight is keeping the athletic facilities together so that they're easily accessible to school staff and getting the parking as close as we can. So from a school leadership perspective, they also want the, those things concentrated in one area, and, but we have, the parking here is much closer than Al Covey. You're also building for the present and for the future. At some point, if you want the stands on the football side, parking's got to be far enough away to accommodate it. So it's, it's, it's an effort to try to balance it.
Yeah.
Perfect note.
We need some shuttles.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you start doing your wiring with your cameras, you don't, they be doing the wiring?
Is that going to be in the contract?
We haven't finalized it yet, there's a.
The reason I ask that question because at other schools, there are a lot of dead spots that you can't pick up, and you can make sure we have all those spots covered.
Yes, sir. And one of the items in the capital projects budget for this year is we're going to begin replacing cameras, and so that we just want to match, make sure that whatever we do at Eastside matches what we're doing everywhere else, so we haven't made the final determination about wiring yet.
On the cafeteria, where are the, the trucks? Where do they come in at? I didn't see that.
Right, right here.
Oh, okay, I see.
We have a service road that runs across the back, so everything is serviced back here. If the band is going to another school, they have wide exit doors so that they can load up back here at this patio.
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Moore?
Can we see the property view again?
Certainly.
Dr. Barr, is this property lines, the dark line here that doesn't go all the way to 142? Or is that just disturbed its lines?
This is.
The squared-off area?
Yeah, that's the property line.
That's the property line.
So, so you won't be able to.
No, it's out to the road.
Well, it's out to the road. Excuse me. Well, it's out to the road, excuse me. It's out to the road right here, goes across here, comes back, comes down.
Okay, so you're not gonna be able to?
That one section up there is the road access, that's the part, the property goes out.
Right, right.
Okay, so those two lots or whatever that is, you won't, you won't see? Just trying to get a visual of how you'll see the school from the road, apparently you're really not.
No.
Okay, I was gonna say, you could square it up to the road a little bit, but you're not gonna see it, doesn't really matter, I guess.
In spite of the, the size of the site, this is all wetlands right here and over here. And we're having to cross it right here, but there's a stream there, so we, we kinda boxed into that box.
So what is that on the right side, in there, all that area, right in there?
Right here.
To your right?
Those are residences here.
Okay.
Along one forty-two. The cemetery is right over here. Now, this was a fairly preliminary site, so as we developed it, we pulled this road back. And we pulled the grades back, and we've limited the clearing in this area, it will be fenced and gated and marked.
Madam Chair, I have one more question, and I don't know that it's necessarily Ray can answer, but you said that y'all were gonna talk to the DOT when we were having a traffic study done? Has that been completed?
It has been.
Yes ma'am, and we're working through that process, and I anticipate us visiting you again in the next couple of weeks to have a discussion about that.
What is the problem, issue with expanding the parking on this side here?
Well, that's where the cemetery is, right here.
I did that for a purpose, so that everybody recognized we bought property with a cemetery on it. And why can't we bring additional parking close up to it?
We have another school with a cemetery down too, Mansfield.
Mansfield, yeah.
So we should all get them with the cemetery?
No, I'm just saying, that's not the only one we had, but you made it seem like that's the only one we had.
We had an opportunity, we had an opportunity not to be in this position. And another question, what portion of the property is considered none, I would say you can't disturb it because it's wetland? And what's going to hold retainable walls, or retainapawns? What, what, how much property we using for that issue?
I do not have a square foot area for you, but we can get that for Mr. Bar.
And from here, where is, what direction would the additions be going to, so give me?
The additions, the site will be graded so that at any time you want to, you can add an addition here and an addition here.
And there'll be two floors?
There would be two floors to get the student capacity.
Same height?
Yes, it would match what's there.
When will we get an elevated field?
Of, when you say elevated, what?
You get the elevation of the project?
The elevations, uh, those are being worked on right now, I would say within another week or two, they would be complete.
And what's the reason why we can't extend the parking on this side as well?
Here.
Yeah.
Well, this is a detention pond here, this is a wetland, so we can't go any further, we've come right up to it.
So all down to the corner down there is wetland also?
A good portion of this down here has some wetlands in it too.
How many, I, I forgot the exact acreage.
Hundred and seventy.
A hundred and seven.
Acres, yes ma'am.
A hundred and seven acres, and then, and, and Dr. Bar, it may be you to answer this question versus Mr. Moore, because I don't, I want, I want people thinking a certain thing.
I hope Mr. Moore to answer, man.
On the cemetery, the cemetery is not being used by the family, it has not been used in a very long time.
There are descendants.
Right.
That, that we've been in communication with, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Well, how, how many acres of this, does that take up, does the cemetery take up?
It's very small. Oh gosh, that thing is probably only twenty, the, the bordered, stone bordered area is probably about twenty feet by about forty or fifty feet. The archaeologists laid out an additional area just to be sure. And when we provide our information to the contractor, our clearing area stops well beyond that, so.
And no plans for them to come back, great, no, I'm just playing.
Once you do have to provide access to the cemetery.
Yes sir. That's correct, yes.
And when will that access be depicted on here?
It's just the regular roadway, that would have access via our.
You gotta come on school property.
That's correct, yeah.
Does school property have a roadway?
Yes, yes sir, it's accessible, we met with the county and they have.
Where will that be placed?
It's, it's just the regular roadway that's there, school access. That's right. That is.
Where the students would go, the students go that way, buses go that way.
So they would just park there at the front of the school and then can walk to the.
So they're gonna be permitted to use school parking?
To visit, yes.
Well, if people work out at the schools now, to be honest with you.
And so just one other little comment, Mr. Ray said that the entrance would be dramatic, it'd be dramatic and affordable.
I have one other question, what is the, this required acreage to build a high school, correct?
It's a minimum, but we're, we're over the minimum, and do you know the?
I don't know, it's very tough, it, it's very tough to put it on the minimum. When you put the athletic fields on, east, the current Eastside was a total of seventy-five acres when it started out. We lost a good bit to flood plain, we lost a good bit to wetlands, and by the time that small school was put on there, we used up all the acreage.
That's a good question, Mr. Turner, I think, I, I think, I think the problem is people don't realize how hard it is.
You have to find.
To find the right amount of acreage for property and avoid wetlands or rocks and stuff like that. It's very hard to find land for schools, so.
And when you have difficulty, you gotta, you call, condemn it and you get it. Did you consider in your drawings going to three floors?
No sir, uh, we, we have adequate space for, three floors doesn't do us a whole lot of good. If we took those two little pods and put them on top of this, we could be three or four floors, but we still had used up pretty much the same space.
I don't understand that statement. Why couldn't additions go on top?
Well, you have to do it to begin with.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but in your, in building your, your school or facility, your core has to match the number of people you have, so you can't outbuild your core.
You want, you want your core to be what you ultimately want the building to.
Exactly.
Right, yeah, so the core is twenty-five hundred students.
Right, exactly.
Any more questions for Mr. Moore or Dr. Bar?
Madam Chair, that could.
Review the potential of increasing the parking, because that's inadequate at both schools. And now we got an opportunity to increase it, if we can get a little closer to the cemetery, maybe we can load a little bit in the wetlands, get us some boats.
Madam, madam Chair, that concludes the superintendent's remarks.
Yeah, there you go. We wanna leave them alone, they're not bothering us, and we're not gonna bother them. All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
We have no old business, moving on to new business, under new business, we do have two items that will have to be approved tonight, that will be A and P. So starting with item A, Ms. Robinson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the board, that the board adopt a tentative budget for FY twenty. For all governmental funds to be advertised in the newspaper before the approval of a final budget on June eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Attached are chart choices A through F for the general fund, which were presented to the board at the budget work session. The superintendent recommends chart E, background. The budget for the board approval consists of all governmental funds, the general fund, state grants, special revenue funds, capital project funds, debt service funds, school food service funds. School principal accounts, and the after-school program. Of all the funds, general fund is the largest, as it includes all the functions required for normal maintenance and operation of the school system. And it is the budget that is controlled by state QBE funds and local property tax dollars. State grants include special needs pre-K, flow-through funds from the FFA camp, and lottery pre-K. Special revenue funds are all the federal grants, capital projects includes designated building programs. Debt service funds are required to pay off debt incurred through our building, building programs. The school food service fund is a proprietary fund, meaning that it should generate enough revenue in the program to offset all the costs of the program. The school principal accounts are the funds managed at the school level for student activities. The after-school program is funded by fees paid by the parents for their child's participation. We appreciate all the hard work of the board in working through this budget process, taking the time to study the budget and providing valuable input.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robinson, so may I have a motion, please, for this item, to move it forward?
So moved.
Sure.
It's been moved and properly secured, now we're open for discussion, any discussion for item A?
I've got a comment, I'm in favor of chart E, it's presented by this, recommended by the superintendent. Based on the information that we received via email last night, this, well, I read it this morning, with the salary study. I feel that by us giving the additional two percent will get us to where we are. A, a choice for people where, where employees will want to come, and to put us closer to being able to compete for highly qualified employees here in our school system. And in comparison to others out there that are equal size, in, in equal communities. So that's been one of our goals, is to get our employees up to where we could compete with other school systems. And just based on our historic knowledge of having budgeting very conservatively, being able to go back and look what's working, what's not. And with the ending fund balance where it is, and I'll again, a historical knowledge of where we've gone in our ending fund balance, I'm in favor of this chart E.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cogge, any other comments or questions? Oh, I think Mr. Bailey was next.
You made a sound first.
Uh, Mr. Bailey?
The, I, I'm more in favor of chart F, I think I made that clear the other day, maybe a little bit more conservative, and I understand this is a conservative approach, even with the two percent. The selling point on that, or, you know, the way that, what you were explaining that chart E would be the best, is that it made our, our compensation packages more in line or more competitive. And the, the chart that we were provided with shows current rank and a new rank with the salary two percent increase. And most of the ranks jumped by two spots, so if we were ranked seventh, we went to fifth, if we were sixth, we went to three, in, in some of them. Even with the, if chart F were to prevail, which I know is not the recommendation, I think we would still move ahead in those ranks by one, if I did all my math right. We'd still move up, maybe just not quite two spots, and three spots in some of these categories. I am cautious, overly cautious, I know you are too, just with the current climate uncertainties and economics. Brand-new governor handing down this three thousand dollars that now we have to, will be passed through and maintained. But if any of that were to change, could, could certainly have some, some negative effects. Now, I wanna go on record as saying I think all the teachers deserve twenty percent raises, right? But what is the fiscally responsible thing to do, what is our role as a board with fiduciary responsibilities? In this season, I would certainly argue for a more conservative approach. But I'm on this board with other folks that I listen to and respect, and so would love to hear your perspective.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I think a few years back when we had the recessions, when we had to cut the funds, I think we made a commitment to try to get our teachers and other employees with the system back to where they need be. And I think we've done our due diligence in making sure that we looked over the, the budget, and I'm in favor of E. I think it put us very close to our seven percent fund ending balance that's recommended, so I am in favor of giving, of going with chart E.
Any more comments, questions?
Well, I, I'm in favor of this budget because it does something that it doesn't normally include. And I, I guess by now it's, the superintendent says she, she know what questions are gonna be asked by whom, so.
Well, no, I don't say we know, but we try to predict for sure, try to prepare.
So, I, I, I'm, I don't agree with all of the aspects of the budget, but I, I think the positive outweigh some of the negatives, so you give a little and take a little. But I have to recognize that, my favorite department, transportation, the bus drivers, getting the two percent increase, I mean, that's overwhelming to me. And because we normally don't include them in rate increases, so, I mean, pay increases, so I'm pleased to see that in here. So I'll have to move on with the budget proposal.
Okay, so.
My stomach is growling.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's just really like obnoxiously loud up here, sorry.
So given that we've heard from all the board members, Mr. Bailey, I certainly understand you, the other day at our budget meeting, I knew exactly where you were coming from. We do have a responsibility to be financially savvy to our constituents, absolutely. So I see your concern there, I would be for the one percent, you know, now, and then in December. It sounds like the E is being recommended, and so we're gonna take a vote on the E, I do understand the E. So I'm, I, I was a toss between the two. Normally we look back at the budget in December and we decide if we can do something extra for our staff, for the teachers or for the non-certified staff. I'm gonna say this, if we do an E, I'm gonna be a little cautious about doing that this year, because normally we don't give it upfront. So I do want everybody to understand that, because the last couple of years, they have had the benefit of, you know, right after the holidays and stuff. Or right before spring break, we're getting something from the board that we have approved, because we normally don't do things upfront. However, we choose to do it upfront, just let them know, y'all need to be careful on your holiday spending, because I think we are all a little bit cautious about the December.
Absolutely.
So as long as they can start kind of doing some therapy sessions about, oh, not getting something.
Well, and, and.
Potentially, not getting.
In school chats, when I've talked to the teachers and the folks who attend school chats, that's something that we talk about every single solitary time, because a January pay adjustment is never guaranteed. It is based upon what our ending fund balance is and what's left, and what, what, what the future looks like and what the forecasts are. And so even this year, as we talked about the possibilities, one of the things I say to our teachers are, these are the things we're thinking. The board obviously has final approval of, of whatever we recommend, but that when you, when you go, when you go big on the front, then sometimes the, the January thing.
will, will, will not happen. And so, they, they were, I haven't had anybody say, don't, don't do that, wait and, wait and see, at least to this date.
Of course. The lobby is like, well, I want it upfront, I want my funds.
No one has said they didn't want a raise? Are you kidding?
No, 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 they all are looking forward to potentially experiencing a substantial increase in their pay from the bus drivers, to the school nutrition employees, to our custodial team, to our maintenance team, everybody in our district who has worked so hard to take care of our kids and our school system, are, are really looking forward to a more competitive approach in terms of getting us closer to being number one in this area. And while our strategic plan addresses it specifically in the area of high-quality workforce, it doesn't say we have to be number one. What it says is, you, we must continuously look and monitor to make sure that we are headed in the right direction, and that we don't become such a significant outlier that people are forced to make choices that we would prefer them not to make. So, and, and I absolutely understand Mr. Bailey's position as well. I, I think Erica and I can, can tell you that we are often quite skittish about making decisions that, that are, are this big, because of the same concerns that you have. And we're also looking towards the future and making sure that everything that we do is sustainable for the long run, not something, and, and I think anybody who's in this room who's attended school chats will tell you that that's one thing that we talk about all the time, is we've chosen a pace that allows for the things that we've done to be sustainable for a longer period of time. And, and this, this still follows that, it's just a little tiny bit more aggressive. Makes me a little uncomfortable, and I'm sure it makes everybody else a little bit uncomfortable, but I think it's necessary at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the motion on the floor is to move forward with the recommendation of the superintendent with going with chart E. All in favor, let me hear you say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five, zero. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item B.
Item B is Ms. Robinson's item, but I'm going to take it tonight, because she's had a lot on her plate. And did not know the outcome of item A. So, in item B, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for third-party administrator services awarded to the underwriters group of Louisville, Kentucky be renewed for an additional term. The effective date will be July 1, 2019, and the expiration date will be June 30, 2020. The estimated contract value is $44,000. The contract includes claim management administration, reporting services and records retention, cost containment, quality assurance, and communication, and claim settlement and resolution. And so, that is aligned with strategic goal area two, high-quality workforce, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. And as you can see, the funding source is fiscal year 2020 general funds upon approval of the budget. That concludes item B.
Okay, thank you, Dr. War. Any questions for item B?
Yes, if, if I may.
Yes.
If we eventually add staff in that department, would we continue to, to have this contract for a third-party administrator?
In most situations, most school districts do use a third-party administrator, just because of, you can do it more cost-effectively. Probably, we would end up, and I do have a list of responsibilities in anticipation of such questions, if, if, if we want to go, what we do internally and what we, what those folks do externally. But it would require a couple of positions, probably, and honestly, we can do that more cost-effectively, utilizing that service.
Good, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. War. You done for tonight?
That's, that's it, yes, ma'am.
Dr. Thomas, item C.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the Title I handbooks needed for the school system be purchased from Rico USA Incorporated of Atlanta, Georgia. The total cost is $42,124.05. Rationale. Each year, Title I is required to provide a number of documents to families of schoolchildren within the school system. These documents provide a description of Title I, its programs and benefits, and advises them of their rights under federal law. They also provide resources to encourage and develop parental and family engagement in their child's education. The school system will utilize a manage, a managed print services contract overseen by U.S. communities, a national purchasing cooperative to procure the handbooks. This particular item is aligned with goals, two-goal areas, strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic, strategic goal area three, climate, culture, and communications. And the funding source is from FY20, or FY19 Title I funds, function 2100, object code 610. This concludes item C.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Any questions for Dr. Thomas?
Just a quick one.
Sure.
I'm not going to bog this thing down all night, I promise. This goes to every student? Is that right?
Yes, that is correct, at a Title I school. That is correct.
All right. So, is there any reason we can't do the same, like, put all this in the same handbook? Do we have to have two separate handbooks? Like, every school, every student gets a handbook, right? A school handbook?
That is correct.
And then a separate Title I handbook?
Oh, okay, the school handbook and then a Title I handbook.
Yeah, so what, what, Mr.?
It's tied with Title I funds.
Yeah. The, the school handbook, so what Mr. Bailey is asking is, can we include in the, the traditional school handbook, all the documentation that you send home via the Title I handbook? And?
Well, that is something that we certainly can look into.
But it would be too late this year? Only, only because the handbooks are moving forward?
I just, I gotta find 1.6 million, now that I got the, the chart passed. So, I'm trying, I'm on nickel and dime this thing, yeah.
These are federal funds.
I understand, but you would still think, regardless, there's still a way to save money, you would think, if you could combine the two, plus, as parents, we don't have to have all this material paper that comes home first week of school, we have to fill out the same thing over and over and over and over again.
Yes.
Same information, rather, on 12 different documents.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. D, E, and F, Dr. Warfield.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item D. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts awarded to the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. The effective date will be July the 1st, 2019, and the expiration date will be Ju-, June the 20th, June 30th, I'm sorry, 2020. That's for illuminate education for 22,600, I'm sorry, $226,650.50. Frontline education, $102,058.29. And Pearson Education, $229,079. Rationale. Illuminate Education's comprehensive student assessment solution provides a turnkey platform to handle the school system's student assessments needs and documentation. The comprehensive solution includes the following components, which are listed below. It administers the existing Newton County School System assessments, the formative and summatives in the electronic and/or paper format when necessary. It allows administrators and faculty to collaboratively develop items and assessments, provides a comprehensive data management system for all components within the CSA solution, imports and exports demographic and other data to and from the NCSS Student Information System, which is currently Infinite Campus, imports item bank data from various digital applications, including but not limited to Word, Excel, student and class rosters, demographic information, and historical assessment data from the CSA solution. It delivers robust reporting capabilities to teachers, administrators, and parents through a single user-friendly dashboard, and provides thorough training and ongoing support to personnel for all facets of the CSA solution. Frontline Education, which is the Edivate product, it is offered by Frontline Education, which is formerly known as the School Improvement Network. It provides for a web-based, on-demand solution that supports the establishment of a systematic, job-embedded professional learning program. The solution allows educators to assess thousands of award-winning professional development videos on hundreds of topics. Most videos include downloadable lesson plans and study guides. It also provides a platform for online collaboration between peers and within groups. The Operation 360, an included component, allows instructional leaders to perform effective classroom walkthroughs as well as observations. Pearson Education, online digital and blended platform, which we call Conexus, formerly known as Gradpoint, delivers rigorous, standards-based curriculum assessments, student data, and reports. The platform offers classroom customization and technology options, as well as personalized learning pathways to, to encourage students to take ownership of their education. Conexus provides solutions for blended learning, credit recovery, acceleration, project-based learning, and alternative education. The school system will utilize a competitive, a competitively bid contract managed by National Buy Board, a national purchasing cooperative established in part by the National School Boards Association to purchase the software. This addresses strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. The supporting, is included in supporting documents are the quotes for each of these programs, Pearson Frontline, as well as Illuminate. The funding source for Illuminate is general, will, will come from the general funds, function 1,000, object 612. Frontline Education will come from FY20 Title II A Funds, function 1,000, object code 612. And Pearson Education will come from FY20 General Funds, function 1,000, object 612. That concludes.
Any questions on D? Okay, having none, you can continue.
Item E. The superintendent recommends the approval of the attached contract with flexible creativity for 36 days of professional learning. The total purchase is $126,000 plus travel expenses. The rationale, the district and individual schools have utilized the services provided by flexible creativity to support the district's strategic goal area one, which is student achievement and success, with a focus on performance objective one, to improve student mastery of standards, and the action steps outline their actor, an initiative one, which is increase instructional capacity of teachers in our classrooms. The selected school staff will participate in coaching and modeling sessions that focus on effective professional learning communities, research-based instructional strategies, and building background knowledge in content areas. Additionally, teachers new to the district, as well as instructional coaches, will participate in sessions focused on continued implementation of research-based instructional strategies, building background knowledge, and professional learning communities. The daily rate for the sessions is 3,500 plus travel expenses. This addresses strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. Included are support, is the supporting document, which is the flexible creativity agreement. The funding source for this agreement would be from FY20 Title II A Funds, function 2210, object code 300.
Any questions for item E? You may continue.
Item F. The superintendent recommends the purchase, the purchase of the corrective reading intervention program for middle schools to help with reading and comprehension skills. The total purchase is $275,173.13. The rationale, corrective reading is a comprehensive, direct instruction reading intervention program for struggling readers. It provides intensive reading intervention for students in grades three through eight who are reading below grade-level expectations using age-appropriate materials. The program is designed to meet the needs of students who are performing below grade-level expectations in reading and other subject areas. It helps students meet the rigorous demands of standards in vocabulary, word recognition, fluency, and comprehension through explicit instruction, modeling, guided practice, and independent practice. The program utilizes methodology to provide the most explicit systematic and accelerated instruction. Purchasing the corrective reading program will enhance the reading skills of the struggling reader by addressing mistakes often repeated, such as frequent word identification errors, reading connected sentences, word omissions, word additions, and confusion with high-frequency words. The program effectively addresses the, the specific needs of the struggling reader by providing the students with daily practice in oral reading and immediate feedback. This addresses strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. Included in, is the supporting document, included in supporting documents is the quote for the corrective reading program. The funding source will be FY20 General Funds, which will come from function code 1,000, object 610.
Any questions for Dr. Warfield about item F?
Yes, I have a statement. If a parent come to me and ask me, and tell me that, that son or daughter are not reading at grade level, understanding this, what would I tell them? Would I tell them about this program, or would I say, go talk to your teacher? Just tell me, what should I do?
It would be my hope that the parent could tell you about the program, because all of the middle schools will be utilizing this particular program daily during their intervention block at the beginning of the day. So, the students actually, at the beginning of the year, they'll be assessed, and we'll find out the level that they're on, and we'll address their decoding or comprehension skills during that time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Warfield. Item G, Dr. Mosley. She's presenting to us for the first time since she came here, so we each have five questions for you tonight. She has been avoiding us. Wonderful, so, here we go. Handwriting Without Tears. The superintendent recommends that the Office of Curriculum and Instruction purchase handwriting without tears from Learning Without Tears. Background. The Georgia Standards of Excellence in English Language Arts mandate the teaching of handwriting in grades kindergarten through fourth grade. The standards show a progression of handwriting skills as students move from one grade to the next. It is the expectation that teachers implement all of the Georgia Standards of Excellence with fidelity and efficacy. Purchasing handwriting without tears will give teachers a tool to provide knowledge, skills, and materials needed to effectively teach print writing and cursive writing. Handwriting Without Tears teaches students to understand the handwriting process, incorporates foundation skills prior to paper and pencil, combines developmental and multi-sensory teaching strategies to teach print and cursive writing, provides handwriting assessments, applies simple yet effective remediation strategies, and is research-based. I won't read all of the standards that this does cover, but you should have a copy of the standards all the way from kindergarten to fourth grade. The cost of this product for the 2019-20 school year is $56,257. This expense will be paid with budgeted fiscal year 20 general fund dollars from function 1,000, object 642, in the Division of Student Achievement and Success. Okay, thank you, Dr. Mosley. Do we have any questions for Dr. Mosley?
Presentation without tears.
No tears.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley.
Thank you.
Okay. Item H and I, Mr. Lin Zai.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fuwei. I've told the second time it's a charm, so I'm hoping that it works out that way. Superintendent recommends the renewal of these following contracts, and the rationale behind it, it helps us to pursue achieving organizational excellence. So, that's it? That's my rationale?
Okay. Item H. Everybody has reviewed item H? Any questions regarding item H? Okay. Item I.
Yes. Superintendent recommends the annual renewal contract for beverages for the school nutrition program be awarded to Coca-Cola Refreshments of Decatur, Georgia, effective July 1, 2009. After the solicitation results showed that Coca-Cola more comprehensively responded to our bid, and they have the lowest price. Rationale, still targeting organizational and operational excellence.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lin Zai. Anybody have questions about item I?
Things go better with Coke.
I do have a question about item I, actually.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's certain beverages that aren't included in the Coca-Cola, right? They were supposed to phase those out, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and some of that is due to the law, far as compliance with smart snack compliance. Certain beverages do not meet the nutrition requirements, so.
Okay, that was my question.
Good question.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lin Zai.
Thank you.
Okay. J through N, Mr. Garrett.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Items J through N, this makes me a little nervous, I get that many letters. Check to see what words they might spell. All right. Item J. The superintendent recommends identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy DO.
Okay, on J, we have the list before us. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Garrett, you may continue.
Okay, Mr. Garrett, you may continue.
The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts awarded to the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. Number one, Mansfield Power &amp; Gas, which is for natural gas, estimated contract value $70,000. Number two, Automated Logic Corporation, which is maintenance of facility automation system, estimated contract value $47,360. And number three, Nickel Security Commercial, which is for intrusion and monitoring services, which is estimated contract value of $175,000. Mansfield Power &amp; Gas, the contract was originally awarded on May 15, 2018. The contract covers 13 accounts served by Atlanta Gaslight Company in the Transco Pool. The vendor has met all contractual requirements and has agreed to continue their service under the current terms and conditions of the contract. The effective date will be June 1, 2019, with an expiration date of May 31, 2020. Automated Logic Corporation. ALC provides a maintenance contract for all components of the facility automation system used at the schools and facilities within the school system. That is for HVAC controls, for those of you who aren't familiar with it. The vendor provides regular inspection as well as service and maintenance on equipment as required. It allows remote access to and manipulation of HVAC and boiler temperature controls within buildings, timer settings, outside lighting, as well as monitoring temperatures, walk-in coolers and freezers. The effective date will be July 1, 2019, with an expiration date of June 30, 2020. The third one, Nickel Security Commercial. The contract was originally awarded on June 19, 2018. The solicitation prescribes turnkey solution for comprehensive third-party monitoring, periodic testing, maintenance, repair, installation, construction services for low voltage electronic equipment, for intrusion detection, fire alarms, closed-circuit television, surveillance and recording device systems for all school system facilities. The vendor has met all contractual requirements and has agreed to continue their service under the current terms and conditions of the contract, effective date July 1, 2019, expiration date June 30, 2020. And those are all funded from Function 2600 of the General Fund upon approval of the FY20 budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions about item K? You may continue.
Item L. The superintendent recommends the approval of the use of the cafeteria at Clements Middle School by Impact Church Ministries for worship services. Impact Church Ministries has requested to rent the cafeteria at Clements Middle School for worship services. Cafeteria will be utilized on Sundays through June 30, 2020. The facility fee is $50 per usage, utility $72 per usage. Custodians, select custodians will be hired to clean the facility after use. The principal of Clements Middle School has consented to this arrangement.
Thank you. Any questions about item L? M?
Item M. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for waste disposal and recycling be awarded to Georgia Waste Systems doing business as Waste Management of Lake City, Georgia. The effective date will be July 1, 2019, with the expiration date June 30, 2020. The estimated contract value is $189,800. An invitation for bids for waste disposal and cardboard recycling is open on April 26, 2019. The bid includes provision of garbage and recycling containers at schools and facilities as well as regularly scheduled disposal of the contents therein. Bids are evaluated on the cost per spectacle per pickup for both garbage and cardboard recycling dumpsters. Although the bid went out to numerous vendors, only Waste Management submitted a bid in response to this solicitation. The vendors' prices are listed in the table below. The estimated contract value is $189,800. This cost will be paid for budgeted FY20 General Funds upon approval of the FY20 budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for M? Or about M, excuse me? Okay. Ian?
Item M, N, excuse me. The superintendent recommends a contract for asphalt parking lot maintenance at select facilities be awarded to Georgia Paving Incorporated of Duluth, Georgia. Total contract value $219,511.28. Invitation for bids for asphalt parking lot maintenance at select facilities is open May 1, 2019. The project consists of asphalt patching, resurfacing, seal coating, and striping services. The facilities include West Newton Elementary School and Alcovee High School. Seven vendors participated in the solicitation process. The vendors and their prices are presented in the table below. Upon evaluation, it was determined to be in the best interest of the school system to award the contract to Georgia Paving Incorporated, as this offered the lowest overall cost. The total contract value is $219,511.28. This cost will be paid for with both budgeted FY19 General Funds and capital funds.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions about Ian?
Quick question about the, the bid is 40,000 low. Did someone just vet it and make sure we got apples, apples? Because it seems like a...
It's a big difference.
Yeah. It is. We, that company...
It's almost $100,000 between the highest and the lowest.
Yeah. The company's done work for us a couple of times in the past, and it had done good work. So, we did, we did call them and make sure that they were happy with their bid, just to make sure, because it is a...
Yeah, it's a big difference.
Yeah. It is a significant difference, about a 10% difference, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Garrett?
20% difference. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm asking. Thank you.
Item O, Dr. Fayou.
Let Mr. Garrett go ahead and take it away. Happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, it's been a long night. The superintendent recommends the acceptance of the proposal to beat the Internet access and internal connections needed for the school system. Annually, this technology department issues solicitations for Internet connections, and internal connection is part of the E-Rate process. E-Rate is the federal government program designed to fund affordable access and advanced telecommunication services in libraries and schools down to the classroom level. The focus of the program is on infrastructure and transport, not content or end-user equipment. E-Rate funding is prioritized with the Internet access being the top priority, followed secondarily by internal connections and basic maintenance. E-Rate funds are calculated as a percentage of discount off of the pricing received from vendors through solicitation process. The level of discount and subsequent funding is based on the percentage of students eligible for the National School Lunch Program and other specified alternative methods for determining poverty levels within the school system. E-Rate funds are then dispersed to applicants based on need, which is ranked from highest to lowest, and then funded accordingly. At resistance above, the E-Rate program requires competitive solicitations on items funded through this program. A scoring matrix is provided, which allows official identity and best value using price as the biggest criterion, and other criteria rather than price alone. After evaluation and review process, the following vendors were selected. We have services for Internet access, cabling, wireless, access point, switches. The grand total of our projects will be $663,835.35, of which $530,406.68 will be reimbursed by E-Rate, leaving a remaining cost of $132,601.67 to the school system. These figures are based on the completion of all desired projects by the school system and full funding by the E-Rate program. It meets our goal Areas 1, student achievement and success, and goal Area 4, organizational and operational effectiveness.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fayou. Does anybody have questions? Having none, thank you, sir. Item P. No questions?
I can't believe it's $450,000 in switches. And that's not even hardware, right?
For...
Infinity?
Well, the switches, that's actually, the biggest number there is going to be our core over at our Net Core Operations Center. We're getting, due for our core replacement, which is basically the brain of our whole infrastructure. So that's the biggest portion of our switches.
And what's the manufacturer?
Cisco.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Fayou. Ms. Sanders, you have item P.
Yes. Good evening. Item P. The superintendent recommends approval of all personnel items as outlined in executive session, and this is in support of our strategic plan, high-quality workforce goal area.
Okay. Thank you so much. Item P needs action. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Turner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Five, zero. Thank you. Other matters of interest? Do you want us to start, or you want to start?
How, whatever you wish for me to do. I'll be happy to do it. I'm ready to go if you're ready for it.
Okay. We'll start with other matters of interest that we'll say to you for last.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Other matters of interest, any board members? Ms. Bailey, Ms. Turner? Okay. I had one. Just one. I promise you, it's just one. Just one. Mine was about the bus rodeo. I went to the bus rodeo on Saturday. Some of them were laughing at me because I was so excited about the bus rodeo. It's been a long time since the school system has had one, and the bus drivers were so excited about it, and it really sparked my interest. It is the neatest thing in the world for those that don't know what a bus rodeo is. So the bus drivers actually compete. They have a little course. They do serpentine. I learned the positions. They do a docking. Apparently, I can drive a bus now. So they do all of those positions.
Just because you attended doesn't mean you should drive a bus.
You know, so they do all of those, and then they compete against each other, and they get the merits if they do not perform the task correctly. And then the top person actually gets to compete at the state level, so other district students, and they compete against each other. But it was very competitive. So it was like 16, 18? How many drivers was it, Dr. Fayou?
Well, a total of 21, I think ran the course, but had 17 officially in the competition.
Okay. Yeah. They were arguing over who was going to go first, but it was really, really exciting. So, so good thing. It really built their morale. You got a good group of folks over there, so I was excited to see that y'all did that, and they were absolutely excited about it. With that being said, too, earlier when we approved the tentative budget, when we approved that, everybody's like, correct, yes, the tentative budget. When we approved that, Mr. Johnson spoke of bus drivers being able to get something in our other non-certified staff, like the custodians, the cafeteria workers. The bus drivers actually talked about that at the cookout. So they had a cookout afterward, so I sat out at the cookout, and they were really excited about the possibility of getting a little extra coins in their pocket. So, good job, you guys, and kudos to your team. So, excellent.
Thank you for being here.
No problem.
Even though you traveled a little heavy.
I didn't know how long it was going to be.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think I had something to say, but after she said what she said, I'm forced to say this. Next time that I'm fighting for a race with the bus drivers, I got somebody to support me. We're going to go for two rodeos per year. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Mrs. Fury, you're up.
One thing I want to add to your bus rodeo conversation is the bus driver Karen Jenkins will be representing the district at the state level, and she was also recognized here at one of our board meetings. She is the bus driver that stopped that bus on a dime when you saw the car coming in front of her. And so it's not, I wasn't surprised to see her come out as the top competitor. She's a stand-up bus driver and does a fantastic job. With that being said, this evening with your approval of my recommendations in executive session, I'm very pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Ryan James as incoming principal of Rocky Plains Elementary School, and Dr. Christopher Williams as the incoming principal for Alcovee High School. Both Dr. James and Dr. Williams are currently assistant principals in our school district who will report to their new positions as soon as possible, to learn the ropes, but officially not until July, not until July 1, when the new school year begins. We conducted several interviews for each of our top, each of our two principals vacancies, and I'm always excited and happy and thrilled when an internal candidate is a great opportunity for us to promote from within. To have not one, but two sitting assistant principals selected for a principalship position shows the depth we have in our pool of administrators as we've worked diligently to grow our own leaders. I'm very pleased to be able to tell you a little bit about each of them. Dr. Ryan James earned his Bachelor of Science in Biology from Savannah State University, and a Master's of Arts in Middle Grades Education from Armstrong Atlantic State University, also in Savannah. He obtained his Leadership Certification from Mercer University in Atlanta and completed all the requirements for his Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership at Argosy University, also in Atlanta. He is currently the middle school assistant principal at Newton County Theme School, where he has served as a testing coordinator, professional learning facilitator, safety administrator, and so much, much more. He actually was just the recipient of the Hedgehog Award for High Quality Service and a coin of distinction in that I received communication from parents about his superior customer service. Prior to his transfer to the Newton County Theme School in 2018, Dr. James served as an assistant principal at Live Oak Elementary School for five years, where his major duties included Title I Administrator, Pre-K Director, PBIS Administrator, RTI Administrator, Bus Transportation Administrator, Parental Involvement Coordinator, Stakeholder Communication and Outreach Coordinator. He began his career in education as a teacher at St. Paul Christian Academy for Boys, and later Bartlett Middle School, both in Savannah. Dr. James also served as an eighth-grade physical science teacher at Stone Mountain Middle School and the DeKalb County School System for seven years before joining the Newton County School System team. Dr. James has extensive leadership experiences and is excited to begin his new opportunity as the educational leader at Rocky Plains Elementary School. He will replace our beloved Dr. Miranda Jones, who is, who announced her retirement earlier in the year. Congratulations, Dr. James. Dr. Christopher Williams holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management from Fisk University in Nashville, Tennessee, and a Master's of Education in Business Education from the University of West Georgia located in Carrollton. He earned his Educational Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership from Liberty University in Lynchburg, Virginia, and holds a Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership also from Liberty University. Dr. Williams is currently an assistant principal and a ninth-grade academy principal at Alcovee High School. During his tenure at Alcovee High School, Dr. Williams has rebranded the athletic department, increased the visibility for the school utilizing social media, increased athletic scholarships, and worked to help increase both ACT and SAT scores and the school's graduation rate. Dr. Williams began his educational career as a business educator/teacher with the City Schools of Decatur before joining the Newton County School System team as a technology teacher at Clements and Liberty Middle Schools. While serving as a teacher at Liberty Middle School, Dr. Williams gave valuable leadership experience by serving as Assistant Student Affairs Administrator, Director of the After-School Program in 21st Century After-School Programs, and Assistant Testing Coordinator. He was promoted to Assistant Principal of Alcovee High School in 2014 and has served in that capacity ever since. Dr. Williams is highly respected and is an educator and administrator with a proven commitment to student learning. The fact that he is already a valued and respected member of the Alcovee Tiger family should ensure a very smooth transition as he assumes the school principal's position. Dr. Williams will replace also our beloved Dr. Sandra Owens, who is retiring, I think, on June 1? Yes. And so, a great thing that she lives right across the street, so if we need to call on her, we can go get her. I am proud of you as well, Dr. Williams. Congratulations to you. Finally, I am confident that both Dr. James and Dr. Williams will continue the culture of high expectations both at Rocky Plains and Alcovee High School. I'm sure that their knowledge, care, and commitment will lead to continued student and staff success at both schools. Congratulations again. Very proud of both of you. That being said, we have our One Newton Program on Thursday at Newton High School at 6:00 p.m. Newton High School, Thursday, May 16. And then we also will be having and hosting graduation commencement ceremonies, not this weekend, but the following weekend at Springfield Baptist Church. With that being said, I think I'm finished for the evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Fury. Congratulations, gentlemen, both of you guys. I wish you best of luck, and we know that you will be great in your positions. With that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn? Y'all were quick on that. It's been motion adjourned. All in favor? Any opposed? No. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.